Welcome everyone to the November twenty twenty four meeting of the Mount Jewett Borough Council. As we always do, we will start with anyone wishing to address council. I would like to also add that at this time, if there are people here who have submitted letters of interest in joining this council, because we will be getting to that later, if you have something you'd like to say on behalf of that, this is also an opportunity to do that. So with that, I will throw the floor open to anyone who'd like to go first. Yes, sir?
I submitted a letter of interest for the position. I just wanted to say that, you know, I was on the sewer board for a short bit of time, just to refresh your memory. And, you know, I would like to further my understanding of politics as well as better helping the people of Mount Jewett, so I hope you'll vote for me and thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's it. It's me.
Rob and Angel Taylor are also about to do it, and I'm interested in the position on the borough. I was also on the borough one time, but it was brief. The position was refilled, I was just sub until they got somebody, but I am interested in bettering the community and helping in any way I can raise money and help develop the just inquire all the things that need done around the
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Jane Renegy, and I also submitted a letter, and I would just like to be on the board to get more involved with the community and find out how things work and maybe help some of my friends and family around town that they've been coming to me with some issues, and they think that I have a great perspective on things and would like to see me in here, and so would I.
Thank you very much. Alright, anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir?
Well, I'm sitting in the front row, I figured I'd say something, so we
So it's a clean sweep.
Yeah, and I did not submit a letter because I don't live here.
Yes.
Previous position was on another government entity. And our Mount, talking to help me with this one, our Mount Jewett Rotary is going to put up the lights a week from Sunday. Is that right now?
You would ask me?
Yeah.
Seventeen.
That's Veterans Day, isn't it?
Yep, and then we're going to be doing the light up ceremony, then also submit for that.
That'll be the Wednesday night before Thanksgiving, so it'll be the
Twenty seven, twenty seven, yeah. Just letting you know of that, and I am very glad that I can come to a November meeting and see one council member at least still wearing shorts in November.
Geez. Is that it, sir?
That's it.
Alright, anyone else have comment? Back row. No? Alright. With that, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting, starting with the mayor's report. Madam Mayor, open it.
Hi everyone, thanks, sorry to be out of town, lots of work travel with everything happening. So I just want to start with a couple of thank yous. Thank you to the Hilltop Heritage Coalition for a trunk or treat, it was a great success, had over a hundred and thirty people, I believe, attended, so it was exciting. And thank you to the fire department for your help on Halloween with the road, it was very appreciated, lots of kids out, so it was great. I talked to Scott a bit earlier, just texting about the forest fire situation and talking about maybe, I don't know, I thought maybe we could talk about in this meeting about, you know, he's pushing for a county-wide fire ban at the time because of the forest fires that are happening. I think it's something we might want to consider in the borough as well. If, if not, you know, handling township, I don't know what Jim, what you all are doing, but there are active fires as far as the name of Allegheny, right? So it's something just to consider and think about. So with that, I also reach out to Jer, Jerry Recker at the county, just to make sure we're all in place with our emergency plan. And I think he needs a few documents from us, just to get everything squared away with that, I didn't realize. So I'll make sure that's all set, but I just wanted to reach out, you know, ahead of the cold season and with the fires happening, just in case something were to happen, so a thought there. I also don't know if, Scott, we need any like updated list for, like, if you all have updated lists on, like, people in oxygen and all that stuff? So I thought maybe we could get together and talk about that, if that's something you need ahead of, like, power outage season, I guess.
Yeah, we have a list, probably not up to date, update, but I'm sure there's more people on it than we know. But pretty much everybody knows if they need to come charge their stuff, they always come to the fire hall because it's an emergency shelter.
Okay, yeah, that's what I figured, I just thought maybe we could talk about that at some point this month with the winter coming. So that's mostly everything for me. I'm going to reach out to the Kinsu Bridge folks and try to, I mentioned Teresa last month, but putting something that they were about the bridge closure. I think people probably just want clarity, I think it's closing like next week for the next year, so people will probably want some information on that. But that's all for me, thanks guys.
Great, I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's report.
I'll second that.
Brett makes a motion, Chuck seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, yes, sir.
I was just thinking about this, and before, if we can, make a motion to rearrange the agenda, I just think we got three people in one opening. Before we go through this whole meeting, I think it would be foolish to just get somebody, the mayor's here, we swear the person in, and we come through the meeting.
Do we need a motion to rearrange the agenda?
I'd like to
No, it's on the agenda, so
Alright, I mean, I find that
Now, and I personally like to make a motion to appoint Jesse Waggon.
I'll second that.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor to appoint Jesse Waggon, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call, we can do a roll call vote.
Okay, Brett?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Chuck, or Frank, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, do you have the stuff, sorry?
Yeah, I gave it to them.
Should we do that?
Should we address this at this time too, then?
Well, that's the thing, it's like, I haven't, I haven't seen that letter, I heard it was done. But we've had multiple instances where people have resigned the day of and changed their mind. So I think it would be foolish to give her thirty days, think, make sure she wants to do it, maybe read it. I haven't seen it, this is the first one we've had.
Just got it.
And then if these two are still interested, there's a spot, their letters can be on file, and anybody else that knows now, we have two.
That's what I wanted to make sure was made aware to these, to those who are interested in
I think we ought to announce it, if that's what she wants to do.
That's what I'm getting at, is I, I wanted to announce, we have received another resignation. Councilman Blankenship has submitted a letter of resignation, has at this time not been accepted, but should it be accepted, there will be another opening.
You'll read it?
Sure can.
I haven't seen it, I heard whispers of a walk-in bunker out there.
To make concern, as of November fourth, twenty twenty four, I, Robin Blankenship, am giving my resignation. I will no longer be residing on Mount Jewett PA Borough Council. Eleven four twenty four, thank you, God bless, Robin Blankenship.
Sorry, I thought she was moving.
Well, the wording was, the wording was a little awkward, but that's how she wrote it.
Do we resubmit them, or are we
No.
We would keep, we would keep the three names on file.
Give her, give her a month to marinate, make sure she's fine with it.
Marinate?
Yeah.
Why, we never really gave anybody a month before, when I Doc resigned, it was like immediate.
I resigned once and they never accepted it, I think a couple other people have. This was awfully sudden. So, Madam Mayor, anyone swear?
Yeah, should he sit right beside you, probably?
Oh, he's got to stand up.
Wherever.
Oh, okay, come on up.
I also have you, I gave you a borough code too, so you can review it and get further what they Oh, and there's a residency thing in there, you'll need to fill out.
So I guess you just raise your right
Can you come out here?
Yeah, please. Alright, raise your right hand, and then repeat after me, if you will. I say your name.
Jesse Waggon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
The office of my fidelity.
Okay, congratulations, you're sworn in, since you want to fill out this part right here.
You get sworn in, or?
Yeah, you get sworn in, and from now on sworn out, right? So it's a consensus of the council that we do not make a motion to accept this resignation at this time?
Does it matter, or are we, are we filling it next month, or what?
No, we can, we have
We fill it next month anyways.
Well, we have, from the time we accept it, make sure there's thirty days, because we have thirty days from the date of acceptance.
When's your next meeting, the second of December?
Would be enough. But if she wants to rescind it, it's over. I'd like to give her some time to cool down on it, but it's fine.
I just wanted to put it out to the floor to see what everyone else thinks.
I don't know.
I don't care either.
So then we'll make a motion to accept it.
Make a motion to accept.
Make a motion on the floor to accept, councilman, councilwoman Blankenship's resignation. Is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'm going to second it.
Chuck seconds, I'll do a roll call vote on that as well.
Brett?
Aye.
Tom, or Chuck? Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Frank?
Alright.
Alright, that motion carries.
I will put another post up that we're accepting, we're still accepting for another resignation.
We thank Ms. Blankenship for her service, and those of you who submitted letters, we will continue to leave your letters for the next meeting, which is when we should be filling that seat. Alright. I think with that, that resolves that portion, and we can shift to the maintenance report, the borough maintenance report.
I motion we accept the maintenance report. You got a question?
Well, it's on maintenance, but there, up at the park, I had a complaint about no bags in the
Tragedy?
No, for the dog poop or whatever, that thing we put up there, I don't even, I forgot that we put up there.
I didn't, I'll get some order, but I didn't realize they were out.
Right, I talked to Rick this morning, he found some
Oh, did you have some?
To that.
Okay.
But the big thing, we got to make sure they keep it clean, or, you know, when people are throwing those bags in that trash container, that it's taken care of.
Okay.
Just wanted to bring that to council's attention, because I forgot that we had that up there.
I did too, but I've never seen it.
Alright, well, Chuck has made the motion to accept this maintenance report.
Second.
Tom seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, takes us to the sewer maintenance report.
We got a call from DC, I wonder if it's somebody wanting to make a vote.
They just called me too.
Vote, vote, vote early, vote on that, I'll vote tomorrow. So, okay, sewer maintenance report. Our part-time seasonal worker is, was not effective Friday. Everything has been taken care of, the final mow has been taken care of down to the sewer ponds. All the equipment has been serviced, well, pressure washed and put up for the winter, fuel stabilizer added. Everything's good as far as that goes. Our new sensor that is down to the sewer platform, we, sewer pump station is working well. We had the power outage the other day, it called me no less than ten times to let me know that there was low levels, high levels, this, that, et cetera. Everything's going good there. All the plow markers are out for the winter time, and everything should be good. We've had no overflows or issues in any pump stations or ponds in the last month, and everything's working good, no violations, no bad samples, so. All we have is here.
What's going on with the pumps?
Pumps as far as?
The ones that were purchased to put in the ponds.
Those aren't pumps.
Whatever they are.
Okay, well, I'm not a rank five reader, I don't know what you're talking about. Nothing's happening, because we'd have to do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of electrical work to facilitate that. So that is rolled in with our potential Pennvest funding, and I'll get into it when we do the sewer report.
Okay.
It's an area of all beach, that's why it's going to be
No, I understand that, it's just we've had them since August of twenty twenty three.
We'll throw them in.
Alright, I need a motion to accept sewer maintenance report.
I'll motion to accept the maintenance report. I'll motion to accept the maintenance
Jesse makes the motion, Tom seconds, all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, borough managers report.
Okay, I didn't cancel the sewer internet right now, because they have a contract with them that has a five hundred dollar early termination fee. We only have two months left, and that's filled, so it would cancel each other out. So as soon as the contract's fulfilled, I will take care of that. I sat down with, with councilman, or councilwoman Blankenship and shared the figures and how I do the budget. Guess it doesn't really matter, no.
And Luke?
Yeah, went over it, gave her all the stuff that I used to figure it, all my papers that I used, the graph that I use, everything. So I don't know. That's something you guys can address later. I have received documents on all your packages from the McKee County Assessment Office. They want to know if you guys want to have them still receive the ownership and address changes and forward them to the tax collector, if you want everything sent to the tax collector, then she would take care of it all. So you'll have to motion in that. So if somebody changes ownership or somebody, their address changes, it would give, be given to the tax collector, hopefully, and not the assessment office. But seeing that they change everything with the assessment or courthouse
So have you talked to?
I have not talked to, this came, and I called the assessment office because I was confused about it. And she said, basically, it's to have things stay the way they are, or to have everything go, go to, ownership changes would be received. They would notify the tax collector directly instead of notifying the assessment office.
Yes, have you talked to Darla and see if she
I have not talked to anybody, this is for you guys to decide.
Well, I understand, but I wouldn't want to just throw something on the tax collector without talking to her.
I, I know that.
I get that, but I
I sent it off to you guys, so I didn't know.
I know, it's up to us, but it'd be up to us, like, hey, Mark, do you want to do this shit, or we want that to still go? So I think maybe we ought to reach out to her before we make any decisions.
Do we know anything about why this
I have no idea, I have no idea. This is all I was sent right here.
I don't know anything about
What input, I mean, what input would she have, she's, just hear me out, because I'm not trying to understand this. Would, would she be getting her information from our office or from the county, is that the only difference, as to where she would be getting her information?
It would go directly to her, and then she would tell the, the assessment office. Instead of, right now, it goes to the assessment office, and they let Darlene know. So
Is this regarding
It would make more sense for
This is for change of ownership or address, so I imagine it's for real estate
I think we ought to get her a regular thing, because I don't know
Why do we have to make this decision?
I don't, I didn't, she didn't give me a, what you guys have is what I got.
Okay.
There's no date on it.
I think we ought to reach out to the tax collector, make sure, because maybe she'd be like, oh, that would make my job so much easier if I had it first and sent it to them. I don't know what she does, you know what I mean? Maybe it'd be
Or is it going to be more work, because it's all going to be coming on her? Then if it doesn't get changed, it's her fault instead of the assessment office.
Yeah, that's why we need to ask her, because I don't want her job.
And right now, if somebody has a problem, they go to the assessment office.
There's ways to do it. So I think we reach out to her.
Is she ever relatable?
No, no, she was just elected last year. She's got three years left.
Can you reach out?
We can reach out to her tomorrow, we got her number, don't we, Mark?
I do. So if she wants it that way, do you guys want to, do you want to, like, wrap this up? If she wants it to go to her, you guys approve it? So we're not sitting another month with this hanging out there?
I guess the motion could be to follow whatever her recommendation is as far as which option, if we're, because we don't care one way or the other, and our concern is whatever's best for her, then we could say whatever she
I'll make a motion for that, right?
Okay.
We support.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So Brett makes all that stuff we just said as a motion.
Okay.
Chuck seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, that motion carries, and we'll reach out to her tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, I haven't placed an ad out, I didn't, wasn't sure if you guys wanted to put it in the paper or for the old snow blower. I didn't know if you wanted a minimum bid on it, I was thinking a hundred or a hundred and fifty bucks.
Put it in front yard with sign on it?
What do you guys want to do?
By the time you put an ad out, you know, for something you might only get three hundred bucks for, you're going to pay seventy-five or a hundred dollars for a ad.
Why don't you just post it like on the Facebook page and
Okay, do you want to put a minimum bid on it?
No.
Or you want to go for twenty bucks?
Just whatever somebody's willing to pay, because it's going to sit back there and run in, you know.
No.
You can nip mine while you're at it, you can nip mine for
How long are we going to take bids?
It'd be, anything under a thousand dollars, it says, now, the secretary doesn't even have to come back before us.
Okay, do you want me to do it for, like, or accepting bids until the middle of, right before Thanksgiving or something?
Two weeks?
Two weeks?
Or you want to wait till the first snowfall and then put it out?
Tell them to get a foot, put out for bid in the middle of the snowstorm.
First we're going to yell at by Tom for not showing their sidewalks.
Okay.
It's two weeks.
Put it up, and then you take the highest, highest offer.
Alright.
Now, they should come in sealed, though, yeah?
Yes. Okay, that's all I got.
Good. Motion accept, borough manager's report?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Brett motion, Jesse seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Take a moment over minutes, if you've not already done so. And then we can start looking at the treasury report, and if there's no questions, and payment of bills for the borough. We will start there.
Sure, I'll motion.
Thanks. I have a motion to accept treasury report, payment of bill by Frank, seconded by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please continue and move on to the sewer treasury report and payment of bills, where I will be looking for another motion. It's the cell tower up there?
Yep. Right.
I saw, I just saw right over there.
I'm still having a rough call.
Hurry.
Yeah. The three of them are up today.
So Verizon
Are you with Verizon?
Yeah. Does he have the phone seven times, it just cut, it starts with a rain stop, and she said on her end it was here, yeah.
And Windle?
Beginning, beginning troubles, certain troubles.
Question on the sewer payments and bills, Alfieri and Alfieri, that was the attorney that the sewer authority had on retainer, is that their final bill?
I believe so, it takes it through, I'm looking to see where it is, takes it through May, so there shouldn't be anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll motion, sewer payment bill.
Jesse, was there you? Chuck made the motion, Jesse seconded, do approve the sewer treasury report, payment of bill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, takes us to the committee reports, maybe it's the streets and buildings.
Brett, have you heard anything as far as on the, down here where the vehicle, the truck went through and flat over?
I know that they
I see it's marked out.
It's marked out, but that's for the water company, the PA one call for replacing the fire hydrant, that's yet to happen. We ordered the new pole that we got
Middle, middle of December.
Middle of December, so, anyway, thoughts are, I don't know, has Tom given us a price as far as
It's already been submitted to the insurance company.
For the
For doing everything.
Okay, put the new pillar and everything, alright.
So it might not be happening until spring then, if it's
Right.
Depending on the weather condition.
Do you remember offhand what Tate Davis's submission was?
Sixty-nine some, six thousand
Part of it.
Six thousand nine hundred.
Just this part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Less than I thought it would be.
Really?
By the time you take down, put that new pillar in, do all that
Right.
Anchor bolts
Down there in that creek.
Any else?
Uh, no, I, did you discuss anything out, was, because you already took care of a lot of stuff, so
The maintenance
This past month's maintenance stuff, so, the street items.
Uh, finance and insurance, I lost my second member of that committee, so I don't think, other than budget, which we'll get to, nothing really. Alright, personnel?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Community development planning and parks?
No, there's nothing.
Fire department, you got anything?
Yep. Uh, your house numbers are going up fairly good. Brett did the last PA one call for the south side, so we should be good to go on Tuesday for this week. And that's from Division Street to Chestnut, that'll finish up Main Street and all the way to there, and the whole south side will be done. So we're all done on that, except for Howard Lane, I gotta get the number for down there, then that whole end's done, and we can start going back. Another thing is, I want to put a burning van on for the borough, because I don't like the weather, it's too dry. Uh, we've got several big fires around the area, Fort Allegheny, we had one today, there's here and there.
Uh, we've got several big fires around the area, Fort Allegheny, we had one today, there's here and there. I personally don't wanna go chasing one. If I don't have to.
Put that indefinite until someone would hear otherwise, is that your recommendation?
I would put it indefinite until whether, you know, we get ample enough for the rain or snow flies.
Is that a complete ban, or is it like restricted hours, or what?
Uh, you're, what are your burning hours, and I'm not familiar with them.
Six to nine in the morning, six to nine in the afternoon.
Okay.
Um, six to nine at night on Saturday, and one to nine at night on Sunday.
I don't think that fire discriminates on what time, besides what's the spread, so if you're gonna do it, you might as well just do it completely.
I think you should.
I was just thinking like if it's six to nine at night, we're, we have our people in town. From six to nine in the morning, you're looking one to two people in town to try to, you know, and then you're also looking at your, like Helen and Kane, they're all, they're all lacking that, but if we could let somebody, if we could let them do it at night, while we have the coverage.
Yeah, but I think.
I think I'd.
Somebody gets confused, and then they be burning, and then you still gotta go chase the damn thing. And now they hold their boxes for three weeks.
Ban it all together.
Open burning, or somebody got fire ring?
That's, that's another thing too, do like a barrel, like if they're burning in a barrel with a closure on top.
Yeah, but when you're putting stuff in and out of a barrel, that's when things go safe.
Yeah.
But I'm almost feeling if we're gonna do it, you just do it.
Why don't you do just complete burning van, van until you feel it's safe to do anything else?
Well, that's.
Let us, let us know when you feel it's okay, and we'll put it on Facebook and lift it.
So we're doing a complete.
We'll do a complete.
Complete.
All annual fire.
No burning whatsoever.
You may have to put that in a newspaper too, because there's a lot of people don't use Facebook.
Do you please let me know when it's been lifted?
We can put it on the sign though.
We can put it on our.
Yeah, fire department will put a sign, we'll put it there for sure.
For sure, uh.
We could make a couple flyers, put them on the.
Yeah, post those, or whatever.
Hopefully like you said, rain or something comes in.
Yeah, I think everybody knows, like.
Okay, what did you have to do that?
I mean, they're seeing.
If we. Right.
No, I mean, yeah, that's.
And then I'll let you know.
So we're gonna go with a complete fire ban until we lift it, and just get the word out as best we can.
Teresa said she take care of making sure it's in the paper, as a public service.
That sounds great.
We have to make sure that it's just for the Mountain Joe Borough too.
Right.
They get calls and text messages and everything else, and say, is this for us, and where are you at? Hamlin Township, but no, it's not, it's not.
And then I have to have another one for when you lift it. Yeah.
And Jim can help us out, would you talk to you guys?
Yeah, I'll talk with Brad.
Talk to Brad, and I'll look at it.
Uh, I just know, seeing the different times going by out there where the, uh, Amish family, there he has a sawmill, he burns a lot of the scraps, we're gonna have to make sure he's.
He's not burning right now, because I can see his scrap pile from the road.
But I mean, he needs.
Yeah.
I will, I will reach out to Rita Colins, I'll, I'll take care of notifying him of a complete burn ban until further notice.
Okay.
I'll get ahold of him tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright, is that it for the fire department then?
Yep, that's good for me.
Alright, library? Did you go?
Yeah, well, uh, they had, uh, book sales, something, I haven't heard the results from yet, but they were doing the book sale during the fall haul. Uh, and I know, I was in there while I, when I checked the electric for you, for Jeff. Uh, they actually had a couple people in there already at that time, but they were trying to move some of the books at, uh, to sell them.
Good.
Um, and everything else, just pretty much general. I gotta get materials ordered for those, uh, storage bins back there for them, but other than that, everything's going as normal.
Good, good. Uh, code enforcement, has there been anything happening on that?
No.
Alright, sewer?
Well, uh, Self and Barb had a brief phone call, meeting with Aqua last week. Um, it was probably maybe a half an hour meeting. It was, it was a decent meeting, they're still working on their, uh, due diligence. Nothing has come out of, as far as timeframe or what's going on with it, um. They may be working towards getting done with their due diligence by the end of December, beginning of January, but holidays are coming. Uh, one of the main things that came out of this meeting was our contracts. The one that we are supposed to be looking at and have for the Georgia Pacific, and the one that we are going to be working on for Hamlin Township. The big thing of this is if we decide we do wanna divest, and if we don't, to make sure that these contracts are, term, assignable.
Mm-hmm.
If we don't have them assignable, it could put some, uh, cogs in the, wrenches in the cogs for divesting it, or just say even putting it back to a sewer authority or what have you. So Barb was gonna reach out to Thomas.
I did, I did, I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything back. Um, the other thing is, in that meeting, we had instructed that any sort of offer or correspondence go directly through our solicitor, and that way it would not be privy to the open records, uh, request, because it's not an open record, and that way we can, uh, have executive sessions to hash out what we feel is in the best interest without it getting disseminated and blown up first. Um, other than that, pretty straightforward, I don't think we really missed anything of substance other than that.
Well, that way our solicitor is aware of everything that's going on too. You don't have to remember to send something, he'll get it first, and then he'll give it to us. And everything that you guys would want to talk about, you could do an executive session.
Yeah, and they can meet with us in executive sessions, and then we can ask questions that maybe you might not feel comfortable with, uh, open forum. Another thing that came out of the meeting is we had talked about, you know, that we're still looking into Penn Vest funding and things of that nature, and they actually encouraged that, and stated that, uh, you know, just because you go after Penn Vest funding, say you get a lot of money and, and we're on the hook for twenty or thirty years with it, that money is transferable, so say we got, we put it out for ten million, we got five million, we got a five million dollar loan, and down the road it gets burdensome, and, or the council's no longer interested in running it, what have you, that grant slash loan would be transferable to, uh, anybody once, it's not just Aqua, uh, PM or whoever down the road. So if we choose to go through with that, which we are still looking into, and I called Marty from the East Group, and tried to see where we're at, and they had put it on the back burner, so we'll get it on the front burner, we need to be looking into this. Um, they, they said, you know, we, they expressed that, we wanna do this right if it's gonna happen, we're not in the interest of anything happening quickly, just correct. So I don't see this being any sort of fast, you know, we give us an offer and then something happens, maybe even in twenty twenty-five. Um, the other thing was, I had talked to Marty English, what I call about Penn Vest. When we had, Jesse, maybe you'll remember this, we had dialogue with the sewer board about Penn Vest, the, uh, area affordable rate. He reached out to somebody with Penn Vest to ascertain the area's affordable rate. Guy came back and asked if we had any outside people we sold to, which we're bringing in Hamlin Township and Sargent Township, and we haven't got that answer back yet. If we're gonna go to a fixed water rate, or change the rate at all, it's my opinion that we get it very close, if not meet the area affordable rate, because if we're gonna keep this sewer system, we're gonna have to make investment, and the investment mechanism would more than likely be Penn Vest. That brings us up to the industry standard, the area rate, the area affordable rate set by not just us arbitrarily throwing out numbers, it's set by a board that, that reviews the poverty lines and everything else. So we get that information up right up. I know this is gonna come up a little bit later with the vacancies and sewer rates, and Frank already alluded to the water rates. If we're gonna do that, the company that we have, our, our system for doing the billing that we used to have with a water-based rate, the gentleman that held it died, and then his son died. So I made a phone call two, three months ago, we never got a phone call to see if there's any support with that system, so if we run it and something happens, that's not gonna be supported, so we might have to look into a different, uh, billing software to be able to bill easily, 'cause everybody's gonna have a different bill based on usage.
If, uh, if we were to switch to a water usage-based rate, uh, how long is it gonna take to formulate a, a pricing plan, and, and should that not be in place by, by January one? Or what are we looking at here, is it?
It's always tidier on January one, because say you decide to, because it's forty-four dollars a month, and you decide to cut a check for the whole year, yeah, I'd love to see that, but unless we have the information and have a billing system set up and in place, I think it might be a little ambitious. Um, maybe we don't allow full-year payments, maybe we only allow quarterly payments, so we don't get into that situation. You know what I mean?
Are we allowing annual payments, and how, and how many do we get usually of that, to that?
I don't know if we get any.
Yeah, we do, there's, there's, um, probably four or five people.
Would, would it not be possible if someone were to make an annual payment, and then we were to change over, say in August or whatever?
That money would still be there, it could be taken off their bill every time.
Yeah, the bills as they come in. So as long as people understand that, that if the system changes, whatever you paid will still go towards your bill.
Just like.
Might go further.
Like, uh, might go further, you never know.
Okay. I think it's worthy of mention, and, uh, that, that they threw, they, I'm sorry, Aqua put out some potential meeting times for us, and we, we responded, they responded, and, and we were looking at a potential meeting of.
The eleventh.
The eleventh, and then they came back the other day and asked to meet with Barb and Brett.
Well, just Barb at first.
It was just me at first.
Yeah.
And I said, do you wanna, do you want me to get everybody, and they said Brett.
Yeah, I.
So I don't know why.
I, I, I don't either, and I.
I typed everything up, we talked about, to you guys.
Worth mentioning that they requested that meeting with, with just, uh, those people involved, and so, you know, it, it, it's an ongoing process that will involve various, you know, and there was three of us plus Barb on, on a committee, and, and we weren't included.
A two-hour meeting, the penny, absolutely nothing.
The November eleventh meeting, to my understanding, is still tentative on the books.
I got back to her and told her the eleventh, I haven't got a time back from her, so.
And, and we should also have a committee meeting probably around that time to discuss all of these things, about moving forward, Pen Vest rates, stuff like that.
I think, uh, it's worth asking, you mentioned, um, the, um, Penn Vest, uh, expected color or something. Do you have any estimates on that, or?
I'm waiting for an email back. Marty reached out to a representative with Penn Vest, Penn Vest representative reached back out to Marty asking if we serve outside municipalities. We do, I haven't seen any further correspondence of you, Barb, 'cause you were on that feed.
No, I haven't, I haven't got anything back yet.
Is, is that a case where when Penn Vest has that recommended number, whatever it is that they come up with to qualify for that loan, you have to have that number, that has to be your rate?
From what I understand.
You have to be at least at that rate. It has to be at least that high, whatever it is.
Grant loan ratio.
They're gonna, they're gonna wanna make sure that your debt income is such that whatever you're applying for, be it two, three, four million, you've got enough revenue to, to substantiate whatever the loan payment, and that, that'll be determined by how much we're trying to get. Either, either, you know, obviously grant money is grant money, but on through loan, low interest loan, you'll have to be able to repay that, plus your continued operating expenses, and so those numbers are all going to be very fluid until at one, at one point in time we say, okay, we're gonna put in for X number of dollars for Penn Vest, and then, then.
There was, there was some other, you know, things that we cover in a sewer meeting as far as, okay, if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna redo a pump station, well, if you redo a pump station, instead of just upgrading the old one, you need to have a permit. D E P has a hundred eighty-five, eighty-nine days to get you your permit, they usually take one eighty-eight, because it's out of the road, so. It's all gonna be time-dependent, or, okay, you know, if you wanna rush it, you don't have to redo the pump station, but pump station needs to be done, so, you know, you replace all lines, if you still have a bad pump station, you still gonna have to do the permit, so if you're going for the money, you go for it.
Alright, uh, anything else right now on sewer?
I don't have any.
Alright, well that moves us over to old business. Um, I, I finally signed the, the thing for the five-year plan for the.
More grant.
Moco thing, yeah. That, that turned into, I didn't realize it was, I thought it was waiting on them, it was waiting on me, and then.
But we both signed, and we're just waiting to hear from them, so I can get the energy audit scheduled, so we can move on with that.
Yeah, so that's plugging along. Um, Sister City?
Chuck, we probably should just have another meeting with that down, um, from the Sister City, I don't remember if that makes sense to you, I don't know.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we, that we go, shift gears and, and go a different route, and, and possibly, uh, ask for the involvement of, uh, perhaps the library, the Swedish Festival Committee, because we, we've gone, we've gone nowhere with this. And, and, and I understand why we haven't, but that doesn't mean that it can't. Um, I'm not sure what, where I go, I, I'd like to talk to, uh, Courtney at the library, and, and maybe, uh, Leslie, and, and, and see if, if there's enough interest to put a coalition together to make a more consorted effort on. I, I, I think it, I think it's a tremendous viable project that, that will really benefit the borough, short-term and long-term. I, I'm just not quite sure how to proceed right now.
Yeah, the last time I talked to Karen Olson, she said that the number one problem with a small town in Sweden, like we talked about, is that they don't speak English, and that's one thing, and I mean, there's a lot of different things.
Yeah.
We had, I, I did talk to Karen about it, but we can, I think it's fine if we wanna sit down with Courtney and Leslie, I think that's.
I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion, as an idea, and I.
Yeah, and I think another, I think we could do that, and I think if you're interested, we can talk to the, the lady from the.
Okay.
Station too, just to see if they have any, you know, official help for us.
Okay.
Alright, uh, policy for contacting solicitor. I did reach out to our solicitor, um, there is nothing that says we can't have a policy, but we also can't restrict access to the solicitor, uh, which obviously was never our intention in the first place. It's just a matter of how to manage that, so it's most responsible for taxpayers, and it isn't asking questions that don't need to be asked, or asking the same question multiple times from different council people. So what he expressed to me is he is willing to work with us on coming up with a policy that we're comfortable with, whether that is, um, if someone reaches out to him, he then turns around and communicates with the president about what that was, and then decide how to go forward from there. Or we could set up a funnel system here, where it's like we're not, we're not stopping communications, but we're filtering communications, so they're still going where the, to the solicitor, if that's the desire of whoever. Uh, but it's, at least there's one entity, our, our president, our, our manager, both, that is aware of all communications going to the lawyer, so that it's a cleaner process. And he's open to whatever we come up with, so.
Was he going to draft up something or, and, and of his suggestion to us, or?
He, he didn't, he offered a couple ideas, but he said he doesn't, he doesn't necessarily have a policy that he could give us. Or he, he can, if we wanted one drafted up, I'm sure he could do it based on our recommendations and what we wanna do.
I'm of the opinion that any contact to our solicitor be channeled through the president and or, and the, the borough manager, and it's, like, filtered is a good word that you, that you used, and, and anything done on our own, uh, without going through that procedure would, would, would end up, end up being the li, the liability of these, whoever made the contact, rather than come out of our, 'cause right now, it, just for general purposes, we, we put what, twelve hundred fifty dollars or twelve hundred dollars?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty, and then he works off of that at what, one seventy-five an hour?
Yes, I believe that's what he charges.
Excuse me?
I believe that's what he charges.
One seventy-five an hour, and then, you know, however long he takes on the phone, or, or, or formulating answers and responses, then when it gets down to a certain point, then we have to send him another check to replenish it up to that, to that amount. And so, you know, there, there might be, there might be questions and, and comments and stuff going in, and we're not really, we're not, we don't really know how much he is being spent until we get a statement, come to find out there's been, so I, I, I believe our policy should, should be filtered through the president and the, and the borough manager.
I have a problem with it being funneled through the borough managers, considering, is the borough manager going to be making?
I have a problem with it being funneled through the borough managers, considering is the borough manager going to be making the decision whether to send it?
I think the understanding is that the uh. There's no such thing as an automatic no, because you can't be restricted access. There could be communication back to say, hey, you know, like if you if you send something that you wanna send to the lawyer and it goes to the the president or whoever, they could then look at it and go, okay. They could talk to you and say, maybe we don't need to go to a lawyer on this one, or we have this answer here, or whatever, and maybe, you know, but I don't think there's, there's no intention of trying to block.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that her duties, her duties are basically anything that's non judicial and non legislative. And if you're making a decision as to whether something goes to the lawyer, that's.
She's not, they wouldn't be making that decision, they would be aware of it and if if they, if it was something that. It's however we wanna formulate, if it's something they think that might be questionable, then it might have to go before the, go before the entire council, okay? Councilman Morgan has asked that we reach out to the solicitor to find out what brand of toilet paper we should use. Uh we we think that's kinda frivolous and we hold on.
Thing is, uh you know, the fact that if it gets emailed through the borough's email and it has paper logs as, you know. Councilman Morgan had requested that I reach out to the solicitor regarding thus and such, and it has a log and it has a file. And here's the correspondence on Borough letterhead to the solicitor as far as, you know, Jesse Wagner reaches out or Frank Ariamo from your private website, your private computer that has no. You don't have to have that information, you're gonna have to divulge it and we don't get to see it all. That, you know, they can't compel you to give your personal uh information, but things that are on the Borough computer under the purview of the open records law. So it just seems to.
And I believe I suggested to you that we actually have um emails that were specifically for council persons. Within.
I don't respond to emails anyhow.
So we could always draft a policy where it is, instead of an or, it's an and. The president and the borough manager.
Well, definitely.
More than that communication. And then it could go through the official channels, so that, like you said, any correspondence with the lawyer is going through the boroughs.
At the end of the day, the borough manager or the secretary, whatever we have, is a borough employee and. We've had a situation here where we had to terminate a secretary, manager, or whatever, I'd say that's gonna happen. But if we just make the policy that this person can only reach out, and you're hamstrung as far as reaching out to the attorney, so it needs to be the, you know, president and this through. You know, the official Borough computer or official channels and everything that is uh printed out. What was sent, what came back, and there it is. But I think we gotta reach out to our solicitor as far as drafting something official in that manner.
So the thing that uh I would like to point out that I I didn't quite understand, I remember this uh being brought up last month even. My question is, why, so I understand we can't restrict access, I have no issue with that, but my question is. Technically, anytime we reach out to the solicitor, it's it's a it's a payment, right? So shouldn't that be a motion? Like, wouldn't we have to motion to spend that money?
The general charge is like three minutes per email. So there's no, I mean, what's that come to?
I don't know. Where's your email? Seventy-five, a hundred bucks when you were emailing in regards to my stuff?
Hundred ninety.
A hundred, a hundred fifty, seventy-five?
Hundred ninety.
Hundred ninety.
I mean, we'd already, obviously motioned and um to have the retainer and have it on hand, so I don't know, there's never been a policy where we had to motion every time we contacted.
It's like when the guys go buy stuff at the hardware store, we don't, or or the gas bill. It gets paid, you know, it gets approved the financial statement, if you have a problem, you don't have to check, you know what I mean? So usually, other than the reoccurring bills, bills aren't set out until it's approved, cause you look down through and go, hey, why did the attorney charge this five hundred bucks? And then you look through and go, who who called seven times? I don't know what.
Hmm.
You know, we used to have a council president who'd call and BS, and then we'd all of a sudden say, why did you get a two thousand dollar bill? Well, he's talking about the forty days. So I think we are gonna do something where it's funneled through the president or the borough manager, requests are put in writing. And every attempt to reach an outside conclusion via the Borough Code and or PSAB should be exhausted before we go to it. And here it is, while Borough Code states thus and such, and you send that to the solicitor and say, we'd like an interpretation.
I know the PSAB doesn't like handing out any kind of information or rulings as far as legal goes.
They're they're gonna, they're gonna straddle the fence on anything legal, they're gonna, they're gonna waffle.
So they're more, they're more of, that would be more of a waste.
It's procedural.
It sounds like what we need to do is we need to draft ourselves, how we envision this policy, write it. And disseminate it, and if everybody agrees with it, then we can agree to send it to the lawyer and have it written up and have a written policy. That this is how we're going to manage communication with the solicitor for fiscal responsibility.
It'd be nice to have a recall.
All right, so is that good enough for now? Who and when are we gonna have that poll draft?
Who's gonna do it and when?
I'll start writing it up, if people wanna shoot me their ideas, I've been listening right here.
I don't, I don't.
It will be an email chain that includes everybody, including Barb and all of us.
Um I'll need your email. And corrections, thoughts, and and I would think within the next week or two, it should be into its finalized forms we're gonna get, and as soon as we're all happy with it, we send it over to the solicitor.
All right.
And then we can adopt it.
Does anything that needs motioned in the meantime?
I don't know, at the moment, no. Might need to motion to adopt it when it comes through.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right. Um that was policy for contacting solicitor, new business, we've already addressed one vacancy, as we stated, we have a second vacancy, so. Existing letters are still valid, additional letters, they have, until our next meeting, we have thirty days to fill that seat. Um it was accepted today. Georgia Pacific Contract for Sewer, you hinted at this, so we need to talk about anything more.
Everybody got it, it's pretty straightforward, I think there was a minimal five percent cost, which is hardly anything per gallon to the.
Point oh three cents or something for a hundred gallons.
A hundred gallons. Um just talked to Thomas about making sure it's assignable, and I don't know if anybody looked it over, seeing anything that was not up to snuff on it. You say, will we get through over here?
Should we wait till we find out how to make it assignable or?
Oh, we definitely need to wait till you get the sign, I.
Can I interject here? Your contract runs out with G P at the end of the year. They're really stressing because per that contract, they can't release anything after the thirty-first of December. They still have to send this through their people.
Well, until it's assignable.
How about a short term?
Well, can't you, you could do assignable and then have them redo it, you know what I mean? Get something in place right now.
Now, that as soon as we have assignable wording, that is legal. If everything else about it is acceptable, we approve it here. What is it, one year?
I think you guys went to.
Two years.
I think you guys decided to when I was typing it up.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think one year.
Because we went with the technical area, while we still got with the attorney, so it's gonna take time, maybe a month at least.
But, yeah, they have to.
Yeah, but at least they won't be shut off.
Last year, they, last year, they sent it over to, or the last time it was done, they sent it over to them on the twentieth of November. But I know I'm getting like emails from her, like every other day going, hey, is this contract ready? Is this contract ready?
It is, it's not, I mean, I like your point, there's, it could be assignable and verbiage, but if it's not, I don't know that we should go a full two years, because that throws us into. Um some sticking points where they could uh reject our ability to divest if we wanted to.
Do we have any idea how long it would take to get the assignable wording?
No, cause we reached out to the attorney a week ago.
I sent him to the beginning of the week.
Does he aware?
Right after, when did we talk to her? I sent it to him that day.
Thursday or Friday.
Is he aware of the deadline? I'm trying to avoid a special meeting to vote on this.
Yeah, we, I think it's okay as long as we get the assignable wording, though we don't get the assignable wording in Georgia Pacific, I ask to be able to get it to their trucket for a month. Or we get some sort of temporary uh extension.
To a ninety day extent, can we do that?
I would assume, but it's gonna, we're gonna have to talk to the attorney.
Yeah.
At least they get back to us, it doesn't help us. So I I'd be okay with the motion approving it once we have the verbiage in place for the assignable, but if not.
Well, why don't you just wait, cause I can't send anything over to them until after your next meeting.
If we approve it and it gets the assignable on it, then you can send it as soon as the solicitor puts the verbiage in.
That's what I'm trying to get ahead of, so if he gets it over to us in two weeks, they can get it sooner, as long as it's, has the assignable clause in it.
Why don't we motion that with that contingency and Barb uh reach out to the solicitor tomorrow and 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 ask for. Ask for a determination and verbiage ASAP, that that it's it's a matter of urgency.
Assume that little paragraph on there, this contract is assignable to, you know.
It shouldn't be that.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be, no.
So, all right, so is that your motion then?
Chuck made it.
Chuck's motion, second by Brett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, assuming we get the assignable verbiage in there, um it's approved. If it doesn't, it's not. All right, budget.
I never had a meeting.
Uh we did not have a meeting, um I had a million things going on, but uh no one called for a meeting, others in me as well, and. Barb had no questions, either, um so are we gonna advertise it or do we need, or do we wanna not advertise?
I'll make a motion we advertise it.
Are there questions about it? Motion's on the floor, advertise.
I'll second it.
Last time I had questions, we had a big blowout, so.
Um.
At last year, I sat with you for two hours and answered your questions before the meeting.
Yeah, and you pretty much only answered about half of them.
I answered them all, Frank.
We're moving on, Brett and Chuck have made the motion and seconded. To advertise the budget, and we'll do a roll call vote to have it on the record.
Brett?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
You haven't seen the book. Frank?
No.
All right, thank you. Um that brings us to the sewer policy discussion about vacant apartments with water still active and something that came up fairly recently, so. You brought it up. Go ahead.
Well, basically, I'm just curious how you can charge somebody for services not rendered. Yeah, the water's hooked up, but if there's nobody in the apartment, how are they, how is it being utilized? We're not charging based on water, we're charging based on per unit. If the unit's empty, what if they decide they're gonna remodel? Rip the toilet and everything out, they're not using the water.
They're in there remodeling and using all the uh facilities and we can't prove it because we have no facilities or policy in place to meter. You're not being charged for the service, you're being charged for the availability of the service.
Yeah, we have no way, we have no way of knowing if a facility is is empty or vacant, or we don't have anybody monitoring that and and so you, basically, it's strictly a. An honor system to know whether a landlord has a tenant in there or not, I mean.
Is it possible to turn off that service?
No. No, I mean, my apartment sat vacant for a year and nobody, nobody knew that there was anybody in it or nobody in it. You get, how, I, how, you know, I mean, that's strictly if you.
Mine never really sits empty, it's just something that somebody was brought up and it kinda sounds like to me you're charging somebody for services not rendered.
Services available, not services rendered, it's service available.
It's it's just like a minimum fee on your water, whether you're using it or not, you're not using the water, but if you.
But you're charging the whole fee, the whole forty-four dollars, you're not charging a minimum.
But we don't charge anymore, even when they are using it. So if we go back to.
That makes no sense.
If you, we go back to your water usage rate, there was always, correct me if I'm wrong, a base rate. And then it was usage above the base rate.
Yes.
We just went to a flat, so if you have, for example, your business, your your building up there, and you have nobody running it. You have water service to it, cause you haven't gone through the steps to shut it off, you will still be charged a base meter fee. And then, if you go in and remodel and you're washing or hosing down or using the bathroom, when the meter turns, you're charged. We don't have that ability, so we don't know if you've got twenty people in there and then having a party and using the facilities or 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 what have you. We don't, so our base rate is, the base rate is, it's, that's what we have, we have no extra rate. I'm not even disagreeing.
But we're not, we're not talking about an extra rate, that's why I said it would be very beneficial to go to the meter readings.
If anything, this is a further argument to move towards.
I I completely agree with meter readings, we should've never got away from it.
No, we shouldn't.
Won't there still be a a minimum rate even if?
There would be.
Well, yeah.
And even if it's empty, they would have to pay that, because it isn't access.
The water, I think, what was it, when we had it, seventeen dollars for a meter?
Something like that per month.
Yeah.
And the sewer was the same way.
Yeah.
If you shut your water service off, we were notified, and then you no longer, because you technically can't flush, cause there's no facilities, other than bringing a bucket in and flushing the toilet. But we could go cap your sewer.
Yeah.
It's, the health department won't allow it, so.
So even if we go to a water base usage rate for sewer, there was, there will still be a minimum rate unless the water is terminated.
Yeah, there'd be a minimum rate for the building, not for each individual apartment.
Unless you have individual meters, then in which.
That would be different, and if they would actually put in individual meters, it'd actually make people's lives easier. When I was in New Jersey, we had a meter just for outside, so you didn't pay the sewer for watering your lawn or filling your pool and things like that.
All right, so a lot of different ways.
Yeah, but right now.
As it stands, um it seems like sewer policy we have in place can't really be changed with reasons of, or shouldn't really be changed.
I say it could be changed, I don't think.
It could be, I would, I would tend to agree that it doesn't make sense to change it, because um it is an access thing and we don't have. A fluctuating rate, and to charge someone zero dollars when they could be using it.
When they could be using. But when your policy, you state the customer and you define the customer as occupant.
Well, the landlord is occupant if they're in there.
No, they're not, they're not living there.
They're the ones who are held responsible.
They're held responsible at the end if somebody doesn't pay their bill, then that's a different story.
When that was changed with the water or sewer authority. Uh that's why Brian Seed, being on the board, he pulled, like in his building over here, he pulled his toilets right out. And plugged them, so that he wouldn't be charged.
That would be E D U.
Right, yes.
Well, which, which is all well and good, and you go up and you check it, and that was ten years ago, and then you decide, well, what the hell, and I put this toilet back in or that to it. We don't know, it's not like I can kick your door in and go check out and see.
We don't have sewer police.
Yeah, so I, the verbiage might be slightly off as occupant or or owner or whoever, but at the end of the day. If you own the facility and let somebody else occupy it, you're responsible for, who's in there, you're responsible for.
We did, we did tweak the wording on the ordinance for the street when we did the numbers, the house numbers, cause they had the same issue where they were talking about occupants instead of property owners.
Yes.
So we changed our wording, because the property owner should be responsible for that, and and if if. If we weren't looking at updating to more than likely a usage system in the short future anyway.
Yes, and that's what I told you in the email, it might be a moot point to even discuss it.
Um so that's where I think that because that's probably the direction we're going.
I just think it'd be more beneficial to go to the water.
If if we were to somehow decide not to do that, not to go to usage, then this would be valid again to bring up.
Okay.
If you'd like, but in the meantime, I don't know that there's any point in addressing it.
No.
All right. At that, we're all wrapped up with the agenda, so we go to public response, if anyone out there has anything to say about anything that happened here, this is your time to do it. But I have to be on topic to what we talked about.
I know I'm not public. I changed just now. Um I just, I wanted to say, um I I have an issue with my um house number. So my house number is one twenty-three and it was put on Campbelltown Road, I have two driveways.
I put your house number down there because of the, you're not accessing your front. You can't access off of Route Six.
Okay.
Because when I was, because the house in front of you blocks your driveway or your.
Right, right, right.
Okay with their vehicles, so you have an access off Campbelltown Road.
And that's one we typically.
That's why I put your number down on that Campbelltown Road, is cause that's your access to your property.
Okay.
That, that's why I knew about that years ago. With the, about that, the the argument that was there about that, and that's why they cut that front driveway off.
Right, right, right.
But I knew you guys put in that second driveway down on Campbelltown, that's why I put your your house number down there.
Okay, thank you. I I was curious, I I wasn't sure if it was an error or.
No, it wasn't an error, it was more of a, this is how we're gonna access your house.
Okay.
And not through the main driveway where it was.
Probably the only thing that I would question if if I were in your shoes, uh Mr. Wagner, is in the event of a nine-one-one call, especially to. An outside entity that is responding, they're not gonna see that on Cuisinco Avenue if they're looking for it on West Main Street. Or Campbelltown Avenue, I'm sorry, duh, I live there too, I'm sorry. They're not going to be looking for it on Campbelltown Road, they're gonna be looking for it on West Main Street.
But they're not gonna be able to access his house either.
But will they see it?
Will they see it? No, uh unless they turn down Campbelltown Road.
I think you guys talked about this after the meeting, yeah?
Well, yeah, I can be figured out one-on-one, if there's a better solution.
Is there some way? Is there some way of, of putting an asterisk on that so that the, the nine-one-one call center has it on record?
That's where they, that's where they have access to your house.
All right, since, since half council, half public has spoken. Anybody out here? All right. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Me either.
Oh, he beat you. All right, I'm, yours is a second. Tom's second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Trustee, you're adjourned.